Show us the way.
Do you like sacrificially?
Five.
I was sitting here fourteen years ago.
You know this. My husband and I have sex. How quickly.
Yeah.
He's speaking to that.
All the time. Nine times.
Yeah, we park our cars. See, we have to get in the brake first. We park it like.
It's not easy.
When you got in your car, then, yeah.
But I have to.
It was a lot different than you.
Yeah. Got to be.
It's got to be.
Wide enough.
Yeah.
No, no, you have to give a specific time. Oh, my gosh. Eight twenty, eight forty-five. It's a good surprise.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, May 29, 2018. Prior to the start of the meeting tonight, I'd like to ask anybody in the audience who might like to speak to either any item on the agenda or any item not on the agenda for that matter, to kindly fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room, in the foyer there, and give it to our deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, who will get it to me. Holding the city clerk duties tonight is our deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, who I will now ask to make the roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Marquart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Eight present?
Thank you. I'd like to ask our police officer on duty tonight, John Lickle, to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. John?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Now to item C on the agenda, the approval of the agenda with any additions or deletions. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Here.
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
There are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. Now, moving on to special items, presentations, and citizens' comments. The first special item is proudly DeKalb. You'll see on the screen here the same emblem as I am wearing on a tee-shirt. You'll see that here. And Alderman, Fagan, what is on the back of that tee-shirt?
Well, it says Backup Has Arrived Woodruff Family Children's Trust and website of www. BackupHasArrived.com.
He's got my back, doesn't he? Seriously, this is a effort to do something for one of our longtime police officers. He's now commander, Craig Woodruff, and this is a benefit concert scheduled for him on the 23rd of June. Craig, as many of you know him as Woody, is suffering from a stage four colon cancer, and it's on the 23rd of June. Our own Ruth Scott, who is the lead singer for Luxury Pork, will be the headliners that evening. It should be one fine evening, and I'd like to ask Jean Lowry, our police chief, if he might like to add a few thoughts to this.
I'd just like to say to the community, everyone here tonight, that this benefit is for Commander Woodruff, Woody's children. It's a trust fund. We're really looking forward to a spectacular event on the 23rd. The Egyptian has been very kind to provide us with facility, and all the things that are going to be going on that night, not just the music, but the music certainly is a big factor, and Ruth's a rock star, but all the things that are going on that night will all benefit his family. So he's in a tough battle. We all have his back, and we look forward to the community coming out. So please come out. Please support Commander Woodruff. And it just so happened, I'm not sure how these bracelets ended up in front of me tonight, but if you find it in your heart that you'd like to support he and his family, there's a small donation for a bracelet honoring this event, this effort to support Woody. Please ask me about it and come up to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And hang in there, Woody. Let's fight this thing and win it. Item B under special items, proclamation. We have one proclamation, and I'd like to ask our assistant public works director, Brian Favor, to come up and receive this. It's for Men's Health Month, June 2018. I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim June as Men's Health Month in DeKalb and encourage all our citizens to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. Brian, I assume that they're presenting this to you because you're one of the healthiest specimens we've seen. You probably would have done a heck of a lot of better job of putting this tee-shirt on, don't you think, than I would have? But Brian, on behalf of the city and on behalf of those who do encourage our citizenry to take care of themselves, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. Okay, item C under special items, Antiglen North Revitalization Plan Task Force update. As you know, our First Ward Alderman, Dave Jacobson, and our Second Ward Alderman, Bill Fanouken, are the council liaisons to an Antiglen North plan that, again, is continuing to show momentum. And Bill, you have, I understand, a special guest for us this evening.
We do. Since nothing really has happened much lately that Dave or I have been involved with since the last couple of meetings, we thought we'd ask Jason Mishnick to step up and talk about Opportunity Zone because it will impact the Antiglen North area along with a couple other areas in the city. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Alderman. In December of last year, as part of the Tax Cuts and Job Act, that was just the new tax policy that was approved by the federal government, they introduced a new program for supporting investment in low-income areas called Opportunity Zones. The city became aware of the program in the early part of this year and reached out to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity with the state of Illinois. The way that the areas were chosen for designation was that the governor from each state was allowed to nominate or designate 25% of the qualifying census tracts in their respective states for formal designation as an Opportunity Zone. So we put together a letter, a request letter, to the governor and sent it off, listing all of our qualifying census tracts and what was going on in those census tracts and prioritizing the Antiglen North area as the ones that we would like to be considered as a highest priority. On April 20th of 2018, Governor Rondell did announce that 327 of the 1,305 qualifying census tracts had been submitted to the federal government for inclusion, and three of the census tracts in DeKalb were included in that list of 327. Those three census tracts are in the west side of the community. They are the census tracts that include the NIU campus, as well as both the east and west side of Antiglen Road, incorporating almost all of the area that we're looking at for the revitalization plan. The way that Opportunity Zones work has not been fully vetted out, but it does specifically focus on capital gains taxes, and what it allows is when the sale of property to occur, the unrealized capital gains are allowed to be reallocated into what's called an opportunity fund and then reinvested back into the Opportunity Zone, into a Opportunity Zone. The latest information that's been available is that the U.S. Treasury Department has handed this program off to the IRS for them to kind of work through and develop what the mechanism actually looks like. So it hasn't been fully announced how, or we haven't really had a chance to figure out exactly how we're going to be able to implement the Opportunity Zone as part of the AGN plan, but it is great to know that we do have another tool in the toolbox as we move forward and try to implement the strategies that are put together by the task force. If you hadn't counseled, I have any questions, I'll try to answer, but like I said, there's not a whole lot of information that's been.
Jason, what are the other two tracks?
They're all contiguous, so it incorporates the, so it's the entirety of NIU campus, and then it's from Antiglen West, including, I think it's up to Twombly, and then on the east side it goes up and includes the area around the high school where Iron Gate was proposed to be. So there's some greenfield opportunities that we can work with, and then also the existing developments as we look for redevelopment. So as soon as we understand the mechanism a little bit more, we can figure out how to implement it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Moving right along, approval of the mayor's appointments. Allow me just to make a few comments. Over the next several weeks, I will be reaching out to over two dozen of our residents, all of whom have been serving on one of our 14 boards and commissions. For some, I will ask whether they consider reappointment. For others, I will thank them for their service, indicating that I will ask new folks to assume a board appointment. Finally, I may very well make new chairman appointments. Speaking of appointments, a very critical one does not involve a board or a commission. I'm referring to my responsibility to name a new city clerk, following the recent resignation of Sue Herman. I assume this authority and the responsibility that goes with it very seriously. Working with the advice and consent of our city council, I will ask these people a number of questions. Do you have suggestions on who we name? How long should this process take? At what point do we have a serious discussion on whether this municipality should reexamine the role of city clerk in the city of DeKalb? Should we be satisfied with it being a part-time position? Should it be full-time, an elected position, an appointed one? Does a public referendum on the question make sense? Already, I've had a strong response from the public. Some of it is in the form of blog postings for sure, but also many in the form of emails and phone calls. In response, I have already scheduled meetings this week with one former city manager, one former mayor, one former city clerk, and one former clerk candidate. I want to hear what they have to say, and I know our council is just as interested as I am as your mayor. For now, I am very confident in the abilities of our three deputy city clerks, one of whom Ruth Scott is working tonight. They all are fully qualified to fulfill the duties that our ordinances spell out at the present time. As I've tried to do in our search for a new city manager, I pledge to the public that the city clerk appointment will be as transparent as possible. Your input and your patience will be truly appreciated. Thank you. Now, on to public participation. I do have three speaker, two speaker request forms thus far, and the first one, and both of these are on items that are not necessarily on the agenda. I'm going to ask Dwayne Brown to come forward, and his agenda item description is DeKalb Business Friendly. Dwayne?
Dwayne Brown, I would like to dispel some common myths. People swallow eight spiders a year in their sleep. The earth is flat, bats are blind, and the worst myth of all, the city of DeKalb is business-friendly. These are all false. Some of the qualities that make a city business-friendly are lower taxes, a high-quality educated workforce, slashing regulation, and limiting litigation, all in the name of the free market. We need to streamline the permit application process. We need a new sign ordinance, which would allow for digital signs and less restrictions. We need a stronger commitment from the staff. Handouts do little to improve the business environment of a city or state. Take Chicago, for example. According to Good Jobs First, a nonpartisan research group that tracks economic development, Illinois state and local governments have given over $5 billion in government handouts compared to $4 billion in Tennessee. In fact, companies received over $110 million in tax breaks to move or stay in Chicago from one program alone, the Edge incentive. Yet, nobody would stay in Illinois, or Chicago for that matter. Is a business-friendly environment with its recently raised 32% income tax increase and the highest average property tax in the country, causing thousands of people to leave Illinois? Since 2013, 1,643 residents from Chicago have moved to Nashville, Tennessee. Taxes are lower and the cost of living is lower. However, there are some negatives to moving to Tennessee. The Memphis crime rate is the fourth highest in the nation. Nashville is the 12th highest. Housing prices are increasing because of higher demand, and the traffic around the Nashville area is becoming a nightmare. We need the state to enact structural reforms to help Illinois cities become business-friendly. Please call your state senator and state representative. Thank you. I also want to comment. Last Friday, we had a Union Pacific freight train block every crossing in the city for seven hours. This is unacceptable. Now, we need a liaison person to call Omaha right away when this happens. There's no reason, we have a rail port right in Rochelle, that they can't get a locomotive out here, hook up to it and drag everything but the broken-down locomotive out and clear the crossings. I know from a fact that the Union Pacific Railroad is politically connected. I had a trial with them, and I found out exactly how connected they were. I mean, it burns me today. Whenever there's a chemical spill, it goes beyond local jurisdiction. I mean, you get senators involved, you get federal officials involved. It's taken away from the locals, and I mean, it's got to change. We had a man killed Sunday by a Union Pacific freight train in DeKalb. I mean, they're not interested in safety. They're interested in the bottom line and how many profits they have. I want to be the spokesman. I know how these people think. I know how they operate, and I would love to be the spokesman. Next time we get a freight train blocking our intersections for seven hours, let me speak. Let me call Omaha. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Dwayne. Our next individual who'd like to speak is on a non-agenda issue, and that's Tony Verbic. Tony?
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
No.
Tony Verbic, son of Pam, brother of Mike Verbic. I graduated from NIU in 1994, electrical engineering, and I would like to talk a little bit about electricity. I have several pages worth of material and not enough time to read it, so if anyone wants the full text of the speech, you can email jmcderm77 at Yahoo. It's John Michael Charlie David Edward Robert Michael 77 at Yahoo. I have a few problems with the smart meters. There's no surge protection for the most part, which would protect from a lightning strike or down power line. Also, there's no circuit breaker protections. It's the smart meters installed downstream from the circuit breaker panel. From NF, here, from NFPA 70 National Electric Code, Article 240.4, an overprotection, any device that contains electronic components would be required to be connected to a circuit breaker if it were installed downstream from a consumer's circuit panel. In other words, COMED and other utilities are violating the fire code, and I would be interested to know how they grease the wheels to allow this to happen. Smart meters are also not UL approved under Ryder's laboratory. Electric utility installers are swapping the meters under full load without turning off the power. This is dangerous for your electric system and the installers. For more information, I prefer to be contacted by email if anyone is interested. I can combine your property with measurement devices to check the electric wiring and help you reduce sources of wireless radiation exposure. City Council, I'm asking you to protect people's property rights from the hard sell tactics of utility companies. Thanks.
Thank you, Tony. I must say that I understand Dwayne's complaint about Union Pacific perhaps a tad more than I understand your complaint. Both of those would follow under the bellywick of our public works director, and I hope that, Tim, maybe you might want to reach out to Tony and to Dwayne. I know you have some specific thoughts on the Union Pacific, and Tony, he may also on the COMED electrical situation. I have no other public, anyone who'd like to make any comments under public participation, so we'll move along to item F on your agenda, the consent agenda. As you know, this is a situation where all items are enacted by one motion. There are no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member to remove them. I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that is approval of city council minutes, approval of executive session minutes, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through May 29, 2018, in the amount of $1,902,382.85, investment and bank balance summary through March 2018, and first quarter 2018 revenues and expenditures for the general fund and water fund through March 2018. And entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Items for separate action tonight. Number one, ordinance 2018-025, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2017 budget. We're asking for passage on first reading and waiver of second reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. To speak to this item is our finance director, Molly Talkington. Molly?
Good evening. So annually, the city goes through an audit process per state and federal laws that the auditors come in, look at our books, and we go through all the financials for the prior year. So we are currently in fiscal year 18. This is for fiscal year 17. And what happens at the end of years, we look at where our fund balances landed. So in a few of our 10 funds out of our total of 29 funds, the total expenditures exceeded the total budget within those funds. Now, this is more than what we would typically see, and I will tell you frankly, it was mainly due to the transition from the interim finance director to myself as the incoming finance director, because in your past practices, city council would have received what we called a carryforward budget. And to explain that, probably the easiest way is, so we purchased a street sweeper at the public works department, so that'll be seen in the capital fund. So what happens is, the approval and the budget for that street sweeper was in the 2016.5 budget, but by the time we went through the process of identifying what we needed for the vehicle to actually acquire the vehicle and bring the vehicle into the city where it is serviceable, that didn't occur until the FY 2017 budget. So the funding for that purchase was in the 16 and 1/2 budget. We normally would have had an amendment come to council saying we want to move that money from 16 and 1/2 into 17 to pay for the purchase of that street sweeper. What happened this year is that memo was put together, ready to go to council from the interim finance director. We missed in communication. I didn't realize that it had never gone, and so when we did finally realize that that amendment actually never came to council, we're now here today to correct those. So going forward, I've kind of changed the process as we've gone forward, and you've seen more recently in your 18 budget during this year, is that if an item has come to you this year and the funding was in the prior year, we've brought that budget amendment to you with the item, so this doesn't occur in the future. And so we're asking for tonight that you approve on first reading and waive second, so this can kind of finalize where we are with the audit and the comprehensive financial report for the year.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass this on first reading. Any further discussion? Yes, Alderman Fagan?
I always like to reach down and look at the financial impact. None of these amendments will affect the general budget.
Correct. And actually, we accounted for them when we were looking at all the funds during the budget process, because they were included in the expenditures when we were looking at the year-end. So we had already accounted for all these purchases when we looked at fund balances going into 18. So they were addressed when we were looking at those.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
I now entertain a motion to waive second reading.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Molly. Number two, ordinance 2018-026, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2018 budget. This is the first reading, and I'd ask a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Our assistant public works director, Brian Favor, will address this item.
Thank you, Mayor. At the April 9, 2018, regular council meeting, council approved design engineering for several community development black grant or CDBG-funded road resurfacing improvements along Harvey Charter and Tyler Streets. Staff has recently learned that although these improvements were budgeted and approved as part of the CDBG budget and also included in the urban, housing and urban development budget, they were not included in the city's FY 2018 budget for council approval. Staff has requested approval of an amendment to the FY 18 budget to include $440,000 to the CDBG funding so that these projects may continue as planned. The projects outlined above are entirely funded through CDBG and therefore would require an equal amendment to both the revenue and the expenditure side of the budget resulting in a net zero to the FY 18 budget. I would be happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Any questions? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Brian, are you asking waiver of second reading on this? Do we need a waiver of second reading?
I would ask that, yes, if you're willing.
Is there a?
I'd like to make a motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number three on the agenda tonight, Ordinance 2018-027, establishing compensation and benefits for elected officials of the city of DeKalb. This is first reading. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this item is, once again, our Finance Director, Molly Talkington.
So pursuant to Illinois law, the city council, if you wish to adjust the paying compensation of elected officials, must do so to have them take effect prior to the election. So in the case of the 2019 municipal election, any action to change the paying compensation for elected officials would need to be approved prior to October 6, 2018. The ordinance has been put together assuming no change in the salaries for these positions. And right now, if you look, in 2016, the most recent action was the city clerk's compensation was increased to $8,000. That is reflected here in the ordinance. The mayor's current compensation's at $22,500 and council's at $5,400. We did take the extra step at looking at comparable communities to see if the mayor and city council's compensation was in line with other communities that we can benchmark to. And then looking at that, the paying compensation is in line with what we're seeing at the other communities. So if council would like to take action, the ordinance was drafted with no changes to the pay received. But you can make an amendment if you would like to change any of the elected officials' paying compensation to this, if you so choose to.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this item? Alderman Fanouken?
Actually, a couple of, first a question. Dean, if I could, with the resignation of the city clerk, would the new, if we were to approve an increase in pay for that, would that be in effect as of the 2019 election? Or would it have to wait till '21?
In the ordinary course, changes in compensation are for the full term of office, so it would not take effect until 2021.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make that clear because, you know, the mayor will be able to point, but it'll only be until that next regular election next spring, and then that'd be for a two-year term. I just wanted us to understand that entirely. You know, we had this discussion just two years ago.
So there are specific provisions in the municipal code with regard to the clerk's position. So there are general provisions talking about vacancies and four-year offices, and then there are specific provisions talking about the city clerk. Those indicate that a vacancy in that office, the appointment is for the remaining term of office. So it'd be through 2021.
Thank you for clearing up my misunderstanding. Thank you. But anyway, we had the discussion on other electives paid two years ago. And I said at that time, I didn't think anybody on the council at that time was up here for the salary, but more out of public service. And I still feel that way. And I don't know that we necessarily need to increase salaries, you know, especially in light of, you know, our fiscal situation. And I think that council can take somewhat of a stand on holding the line. And that's just where I'm at at this point.
Alderman Jacobson?
I respect that, that train of, or that course of thought. But I think it's important to play devil's advocate as well. For what we get paid for what we do is well lower than minimum wage. When you assume just the bare minimums, it's probably at or about minimum wage. When you assume that there is a significant amount of prep time and community engagement. And every time you go into the community, whether it's grocery shopping, or to dinner, or out with your family, that you are being, effectively, you are acting in the course of your job because the residents expect you to. When you add the additional time of community engagement online, when you add the additional time of communicating with residents. Again, at some point, I appreciate the fact council took a pay reduction 10 or 12 years ago to act as the leader amongst the city departments, if you will. The reality is, everyone else here demands a 2 and 1/2 or 3% raise every year. And for the work, both that we do and depending on what the clerk outcome is, again, we are, in all of my other business dealings, and all of my other community engagement dealings, and all of my other real-world application things, there is no boss that gets paid less than a subordinate, except for us. That's the reality we deal with. We oversee the city manager. And as the city manager's salary continues to skyrocket, even as our rank-and-file employees are now demanding almost $100,000 a year to work, in some cases, 37 or 40 hours a week, we're putting in at least 2/3, if not that full amount of time. And we're being paid less than minimum wage. And at some point, I think it has hurt the candidates that you're bringing in. At some point, I think it has created a situation where, again, what Bill is saying, it's a Public Servant Act. And I appreciate that. I realize that. But at some point, to understand the time that's being expended, as we've just seen with our outgoing clerk, it's very hard to justify the time you spend away from your families or from work, or from all of the other things that we have. At some point, we have to increase the salaries to make it make sense for people to want to sit up here. And on my way out the door, again, I'd like at least to open that conversation. I think the fair compensation should be set at the city manager's salary and divided between the alderman and the mayor fairly so that at least there is an annual escalator and at least there's some reality that we are at or above what the city manager is making as council members. And again, that won't affect any of us here without rerunning. It's the, again, it's the only place in the world where the person overseeing is paid less than the subordinate. And I don't think that's fair, especially to the mayor who's putting in 60 and 70 hours a week to do this job effectively and getting paid $3 or $4 an hour, not even, to do it. I don't think that's fair.
Any other comments? Alderman Fagan?
You know, I understand both points of view. We came into this position knowing what the salary was or not even knowing what the salary was or caring just to be able to do our part, contribute back to the city. Alderman Jacobson, you bring up a valid point. I mean, there's a lot of people that, it does affect their income if you're here working. I mean, it takes time out of my work. I get that. Takes time out of everybody's work. But, you know, when I look at these numbers here and I look at all these municipalities and what are we coming down to, this 2016 average, just shy of $5,000, everyone is looking at it from the same point of view of why we ran for election. We didn't run it for the money. We ran it for, to do our part to make this a better city. I know throwing money at something or someone doesn't necessarily mean that it works. You have to have your heart into this job, and you have to understand that, yes, you're right. I can't go to the hardware store without feeling like I'm holding a meeting. So I get that, but that's what we signed up for. I don't think that we should look at it from a monetary point, but also we should look at it from what we are contributing back to the city.
Any other comments? Alderman Noriko?
Once again, I feel like I'm taking a middle-ground approach. And I think there is some validity in Alderman Jacobson's comments, especially given how long it has been since the salaries have been adjusted for the aldermen. However, I'm also aware of the fact that we did expect and imposed no increase for non-bargaining unit staff last year. So I feel that it's important for us to also come under that restriction. As situations change, as, you know, staff gets increases, as hopefully this city's overall financial position improves with more development, I think it would be valid to open up the discussion again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we pass this on first. Excuse me, Alderman Markwart, I did not see your hand there.
Well, I was, I was debating.
Okay.
I was debating. It's just channeling things. Yeah, when I ran, I didn't know what the pay was. I was, I guess it was sort of a surprise to me that we got paid. But, you know, it's a welcome thing. But when you look at it, I agree with Alderman Jacobson on that fact that, you know, we didn't come into this to make money. You know, we would be doing this in Chicago if we were trying to make money at this. But we're in DeKalb, so that's not the case. However, it does help to have a little compensation for what you are doing and the time that you're putting into it. I'm not so much concerned about the aldermen as much as I am concerned about the mayor and the clerk position. Where I think the mayor who, if the mayor's doing a good job, he is actually putting in quite a bit of time for that. So I would be interested in an increase for the mayor's position. And for the clerk, for the amount of hours that are required, you know, that's just, to be quite honest, we should be, in my view, we should be ashamed of offering $8,000 for that. Because that's wholly underpaid. And as you, I think we need to revisit that. And Mayor talked about visiting the status of that position as well. So that, I think, more than anything, needs to be thought of.
Thank you. We've had an interesting discussion on this. We're asking to approve first reading of this. And the reason I mention that is that my understanding, we could pass this on first reading since it doesn't have to be enacted until October. That would allow us a little bit of time between now and second reading. However, I will also ask for any motion if anyone is interested in waiving second reading on this. Alderman Fanouken?
Well, I don't want to jump into this too hastily because we haven't bandied any numbers about at all as to where they should be for the mayor or for council members. And, you know, actually, I think that we probably need more time to revisit this. So I'd actually like to offer a motion to table this for 60 days while we contemplate some numbers and bring it back at that time for action. We have really until late in October that this has to be passed by. If you notice, the last time we passed, I think at the first meeting in October. So we have some time to have some internal discussions and to, I think that might be the best. So if we were to go 60 days, that would make it late July and still have plenty of time to get things done. That's my motion, is to table it for 60 days.
Alderman Fagan?
And this has nothing to do with the cert clerk's office. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right.
This is just the compensation. Then we can make that all part of, we can make that all part of that ongoing discussion amongst ourselves.
Do we need a second on the table? Okay. It's been suggested that we table this motion for 60 days. I have a motion, does that affect any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion now on the motion to table this for 60 days? Alderman Favor?
I would just ask for, if we are looking at the mayoral compensation that we would identify, like Romeo Bill and Belvedere, are those city manager-led structure? Or is it mayor, full-time mayor structure? That would also help with some of those discussions.
So you just, as part and parcel of that, you'd want a little bit?
Just a little more information. Yes, sir.
Roll call on the motion to table.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That motion is tabled. Let's bring that back then within, in that 60-day period. Okay, item number four, Resolution 2018-063, authorizing the appointment of an interim city manager. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we authorize the appointment of our interim city manager. And I'm going to let Dean Frieder, as our city attorney, speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, the city manager recently resigned. The city had asked Assistant City Manager Patty Happenstead to serve as interim city manager for a period of time. Prior to the resignation of the former city manager, Assistant City Manager Happenstead had advised the city that she would be relocating with her family out of state and that her employment with the city would be ending this summer at the direction of the mayor. This has been prepared to contemplate the appointment of the city's Finance Director, Molly Talkington. As the interim city manager, as drafted, that appointment would take effect upon the first day after our acting city manager, interim city manager, Patty Happenstead's employment with the city ends. So Patty would serve until that point in time at which she gives the city notice of her final day. And Molly would begin the day thereafter. This has been prepared contemplating a 10% acting pay classification, which is consistent with many of the city's previous acting pay classifications and would remain in effect pending further action of the council to either remove this appointment or to appoint a full successor city manager.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the naming of Finance Director Molly Talkington as our interim city manager effective the day that our present interim city manager, Patty Happenstead, leaves. I had an opportunity to chat with Patty this afternoon. And I welcome any thoughts you might have, Patty, on that and give us an idea of where you're, of when you might be heading.
Sure, Mayor. So in my plans and finalizing my details, my anticipated end date would be by the end of this month, so by the end of June. I'm just wrapping up some final details so that I could make the move to out of state, to our new location as a family, where my husband's already begun his employment. So in anticipation of tonight's meeting and depending on the vote, Molly and I already have a plan to begin a transition and some cross-training to ensure that if Molly is the one selected to be the next interim, that the city continues to move forward and does not miss a beat. And Molly is up for the challenge. So I'm very excited to be working with Molly, if so approved by the city council, and getting her prepared for that day. So again, we're looking at the end of this month, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to just say that, you know, in working with the city council, it was, it was really a, I think, a good thing for our city to find somebody like Molly who was willing to step up and do this, keeping in mind that this will impact the finance department somewhat. I've asked Molly to, you know, to be a caretaker, if you will, to maintain the stability that we presently have in City Hall. And I have every confidence that she will do that. And I would hope that the city council, after hearing from both Patty and from Molly, would feel comfortable in this move. So it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you to council. Thank you to Molly for stepping up to do this. And we wish you well in your future endeavors, Patty. And we'll see, as your timetable progresses, how that aligns with Molly becoming our interim city manager. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, item number five, Resolution 2018-064, Amending the Architectural Improvement Program Guidelines and Application. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this item is our Economic Development Planner, Jason Mitchnick. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. As council members, at our last meeting two weeks ago, we had a policy discussion in regards to the Architectural Improvement Program and expanding the guidelines and the types of projects that property owners and businesses would be able to bring forward for consideration and approval. The resolution drafted for you this evening, as well as the backup, which is the revised AIP guidelines and an application, have been modified based on the conversation that took place at our last meeting. So what I'd like to do is step through the program guidelines, hit on some specific things to make sure that we did capture the consensus of council correctly, or if there's either further questions or consideration for modifications to the guidelines as drafted. So the guidelines start on, I believe, page five of the PDF in the backup. The program has been modified and structured to be a tier, a three-tiered system, with the top tier for specific projects being a 50%, so a one-to-one match similar to the previous AIP. The second tier would be 25% reimbursement. And the idea with that tier is more projects that are purely aesthetic and do not necessarily enhance the longevity or value of a property. And then the third tier, a 10% reimbursement or 10% cost sharing from the city's perspective, would be for items that are related to either code violations or deferred maintenance. We did maintain the top expenditure or grant that would be provided by the city at $25,000. So that's, I think, the first point would be the tiered system to make sure that that's what council would like to move forward with. And the second point would be the maximum grant of $25,000. Moving through the guidelines, section two, two A specifically, this is one of the things that we talked about was what to do. This is the requirement for anyone that wants to have an application submitted, that they have to go through a pre-inspection or a pre-approval inspection with our building department inspectors. So we would do a comprehensive evaluation of the property, identify any existing code violations. And again, the idea here is that we are trying to provide a consultative service and not just simply gain access to site property owners for code violations. However, in the instance that there were issues in, we call it Chapter 24 of the Building Code, Section 108.1 of the Municipal Building Code. And that's the section that identifies unsafe structures and equipment that would place the public safety in immediate danger and require a city to immediately post a condemnation order. However, the second paragraph in two A also, kind of the idea that, I think the specific language that is brought up was what do we do when we find the pig? And this is kind of where there would be some more discretion on what would we do when we find other significant code violations. We don't want to put our staff and inspectors in an awkward position where we're asking them to look the other way when there are issues that don't necessarily pose an immediate danger to the public, but do need to be addressed. And what we're proposing is that in those instances, we would work with the building owner to develop a plan for how they are going to make those corrections. And in the event that they either choose not to move forward with implementing those corrections or drag their feet and don't move forward in a timely fashion, that we would still have the right to cite those owners and businesses for those violations. Next section that I wanted to point out, so the section two B talks about the application process. And then C is the review of staff of that and how we would work with the applicants to make sure that their applications are complete. The section that I wanted to get feedback from council and make sure we have this right would be in section E, which is that the agreements that would be as part of the grants would require a minimum period of five years in exchange for funding. So that's the, the property owners would be required to maintain the improvements that were funded by the city for a period of five years. So is that period too long or too short? Or would we look at modifying that on a case-by-case basis, depending on the amount of funding that was provided? Next section, section F, talks about, again, the requirement for all application materials to be completed before consideration. The last sentence there, the city council can, will deny funding for any projects where work is commenced prior to city council having voted to provide matching funds, which is really important. That's something that we can't really go back and retroactively reimburse property owners or applicants for their work that they've already done. But we could potentially account for the investment that was made by those property owners when considering their project, looking at that as a credit for work that may, that they would have had for the project cost that isn't going to be reimbursed, so to speak. The next point that I'd like to hit is in section six, page four of the guidelines, and that's the amount of funding. And in the memo that was provided as part of the backup, we are recommending that we move forward with the $50,000 that was originally allocated for this program in the two TIF funds. And then if we do have projects that come forward after that $50,000, we can take them on a case-by-case basis, where we would do individual budget amendments that are associated with those projects to reallocate available funds and the available fund balance to cover those project costs. And then in section eight, the only properties that would be eligible for funding through the AIP would be those that are found in the geographic areas bounded by the city's tax increment financing. So that says that we would only use TIF as a funding source. For this year, we would likely need to do that. But moving forward, if council wanted to look at trying to find an alternative way to provide funding for properties outside of the TIF district, we would need to look at alternative revenue sources for that. But as drafted, the only qualifying properties would be those that are found in the TIF districts. And then one of the other things here in section 12 talks about that a building is not eligible to receive additional funds if they have received previous AIP funds. However, there is several instances where we've worked with existing property owners that want to do a project, but the cost of hiring an architect for them to come in and put together a site concept is cost prohibitive. So we would like to introduce the opportunity for someone to come in with a preliminary request for only design, professional design services and architectural services to develop a plan. Having that kind of concept plan is really beneficial when someone wants to go out and get quotes and bids from contractors for the work that they're proposing. It makes those quotes more accurate. And we feel that if they were to do so, they should be eligible to come back and request any balance. So if each property is, could gain a $25,000 grant if they applied for $2,500 to cover design services, they would have another $22,500 left potentially to receive in grants for implementation of the project. And then the city could, in exchange, have the rights to ownership of those design concept plans. So in the future, if a different property owner or sale took place to that property, that we'd have a set of plans or concept plans that could be provided to the new owner. And then the rest of the document is the actual application, which provides a checklist of everything that's required. It also requires the applicant to provide answers to the supplementary questions. So we have five specific questions that they would provide in a separate Word document that really got in, get into the idea of what is the, how does your project help the city achieve its mission for a vibrant downtown or vibrant neighborhoods? And then also, how the project is going to increase either the longevity or value of the property that is being proposed for modifications and improvements? And then also, how are they going to plan, how are they going to fund their plan? So are they going to use equity? Or are they going to be taking out a loan for the work to be completed? Since this is a reimbursement only, they are required to provide proof through a letter of credit that they can, they can cover all project costs up until the point when the project's completed and we've done an inspection. And then they can submit all the appropriate paperwork for reimbursement. And then also, they need to answer how they plan to maintain the improvements once the work has been completed. So that, is it, are they, do they have adequate revenue streams for the property to cover long-term maintenance for that five-year period and beyond? And really, more so the beyond. So if we know that this isn't a short-term investment where five years down the road, that we're going to be running into a situation where the building is going to need to be improved again. And with that, I would entertain any questions that you have about the program and the guidelines and the application as it's been drafted.
Alderman Norrico.
I need some clarification, Jason. Electrical, mechanical, or plumbing rehabilitation is listed as a major capital improvement. But how is, if someone is looking to replace the air conditioning, wouldn't there potentially be circumstances that they need to replace it now when they're applying for this grant? Because they haven't maintained it?
Yeah, absolutely. The, we're going to, the, the hope is that with those pre-application inspections, when we go and look at things like this, we'll be able to determine whether or not something is due to a lack of maintenance or if this is something that's just due to the age of the building. More so with the electrical and the mechanical, or the electrical and the plumbing. Those are one of those things that they do increase the longevity of a building to bring that with the code. So that was the motivation in putting those into the 50% category because they actually do add to the longevity of a building.
And as I was going through the material, is there a committee that's going to have to review this before it comes to the city council?
No, we took that.
That was a little confusing to me. I thought there was still a reference to a committee.
I'll have to go back and check. That may have been something we missed. But during the policy discussion, I thought it was pretty clear that council didn't want to add another step to the process for approval. So I'll go through.
Yeah, and I'll double check. I don't have the, my note with that reference, but I'll find it and send that.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacobson?
Have a few questions. Going back to the inspection, if the projects were purely exterior, are we still going to inspect the interior of the building?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's the barrier that the owners are claiming that they can't meet. They're not going to invite the city in, in risk that the city rings them up for $100,000 in violations to get 25% of a $20,000 project. There's no interest, there's no value for an owner to take that risk. You're basically putting yourself in a situation where you start the clock on a condemnation for a $10,000 incentive. Nobody's going to take advantage of that.
I understand. I think we talked about that in our previous discussion, that that was one of the reasons that there was the feelings of mistrust or that the perception of how TIF was to be utilized from the city's perspective. I felt that council said that they were comfortable, they wanted to do inspections and understand that the health of the building was in place and that we weren't going to be doing aesthetic improvements to buildings that may have had deeper issues, either structurally or in terms of the longevity of the building. So I completely understand where you're coming from. But I think the majority of council felt that way, that they want to understand where the money is going and that it's a sound investment.
Again, I know that was one of the big hurdles of our last AIP. This is really not that much different than what we had after all the time and energy we've spent on it, if that's the case. I know we had talked about painting. I got the impression from the last time we talked that painting wasn't going to be incentivized, that we've done that project and it adds very little long-term value to a building. So I'm rather surprised to see that back in here. One of my other major questions or hurdles is that staff has to approve before it comes to council. I think that's inappropriate. Again, I appreciate that there's a staff process that it has to go to. But at the end of the day, if the council makes a decision to do a project or fund something, I, while I appreciate staff's ability to give us a recommendation, we have the final say, you don't.
I understand.
And that's not how this is written. It says here that staff has the final say before it even comes in front of the council. And I find that highly inappropriate. Again, the reality here is that I don't believe for most of these projects, that we're going to see much use in this program because of how we're setting it up. The other question or issue I wanted to raise is, again, we're leaving a $25,000 project. If there's an owner that wants to do two or three projects this year, they want to fix up their facade, they want to do their roof. Again, if there's someone that wants to take advantage of those funds to do something and to do a major project, I worry that forcing them to the back of the line would be a bad idea. Again, if I'm an owner downtown, which I'm not, of course, but if I was and I came to the city saying, I want to do $100,000 worth of projects on my building, can I qualify for the full 25? Well, no, you can only incentivize for 10% of one investment. Again, I would be leery of doing further investments. If we're going to do a program to open it up to the smaller landlords and the smaller owners, let's do it. Let's stop dipping our toe in it and trying to play this carrot and stick game with them. There's some major issues downtown we have to focus on. And again, some of the, some of them, I think, can fall into multiple categories. I'm going to be interested to see how that works effectively. And I appreciate some of them falling into the categories that they're in as they're set up. My issue is the painting does not belong on there at all. If it does, it's at the 10%. And some of these other issues, the hope is to get the money used to make a valuable impact right now. And the way this is set up, it's really no different than our old policy that didn't work.
So to adjust the couple of your points, the first one being the way that this was drafted was the, with the full intention that if you wanted to modify this this evening, that you could do so. So this was kind of just our best guess based on the conversation that took place. So no pride in authorship. If you want to make modifications to the way that projects have been classified, absolutely do so. In regards to your point about city's review, I assume you're talking about section 2C, which says that the city staff would review. It doesn't say anywhere in that language that we have the final say. If you go to section six, and there's a typo there, the first section six, final decisions on funding are made by city council. So staff simply would help review the application and make sure that it's complete and then develop a recommendation before bringing it to council. And then in regards to the way, if you have $100,000 in projects, you don't fall in, we look at each project. look at each project that's a component of something larger and then identifying a match per project. So if you have someone that's looking at doing plumbing and electrical as well as roof repair or something like that, what we'd do is we'd look at the cost of the roof repair, apply the 10% there, and then look at the cost of the other ones applying percentage per project, and then come up with some aggregate percentage and recommendation for the total project costs. You easily could have situations where $25,000 is going to be exceeded pretty quickly in terms of a match. So that was, again, that was one of the questions of is $25,000 an appropriate number for the maximum grant or would council prefer to see something larger?
It's number six, actually six sixes.
Yeah, the first six.
There's two sixes.
Yeah, that's a typo.
It's the second six. Because of the limited funds for this program, the city council will only provide funding to those requests that are recommended by the City of DeKalb staff. Again, I don't think that's appropriate. We have the right, if we see a program that makes sense, I appreciate that staff has to be part of the process and they should be, but again, if there's a major project, I would like to see them. I think it's up to us to decide, especially some of these that may fall into multiple categories or questioning some of the things. I don't think that we have to have a staff recommendation to gear, to, if for some reason staff doesn't feel the project falls into a category or something, it should be coming to us. It shouldn't be locked out at the staff level, as far as I'm concerned.
Alderman Fagan?
I think what we've got, you're absolutely correct about maybe rewording them, as long as they need the parameter of the qualifications for this.
The first six is a whole lot better than the second six.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we should have the ultimate decision. Inspection on the building, again, I know it's been overused, but we don't want to be putting lipstick on the pig. We don't want to be fixing up the front end and with the back end falling down. Now, with that said, we've also have, normally, we normally have building inspectors anyway that will inspect buildings. So if there is a problem, it will eventually be seen. For the money, you're talking about 50%, $25,000 would be 50%. Alderman Jacobson's 100% correct. We've got some buildings downtown that really need to be worked on. $25,000, $50,000 job is not going to go very far at all, today's money. I wouldn't mind seeing that be increased. We've got that increased, change some wording, and we make the decision. I know where your intent was, was well taken, just wasn't put on paper right, I don't know. But anyway, I'd be all for it. Thank you.
Alderman, favor.
So in regards to the $50,000, doesn't that cover that in item number one where it talks If the total project costs exceed $50,000, may consider matching higher, higher, higher fund participation?
May consider.
Do you want to change that to the city will consider? I mean, we can do that.
I thought it was a, I thought it was a $25,000 max.
Yeah, there's, in the first section, it says, "The City of DeKalb may consider higher matching fund participation if the project is attributable to a property of notable historical significance or the total project cost exceeds $50,000." So the idea there would be that you would, you could consider those, but you could apply a different set of criteria and standards to projects like that and take those on a case-by-case basis.
Well, yeah, but, you know, the thing is, let's take the Egyptian theater, where they want to put in air conditioning. I never, I never thought of my chair when I heard how much that was, that was going to cost. So, I mean, just replacing HVAC in a building could cost you $100,000. And that, but the way you've got it phrased, it also says that, you know, how would you put it? You have to show maybe architectural or whatever, you know, special reason for it, where if you want to redo your plumbing, HVAC, electrical, where mostly buildings do need that, along with some structural. I've got, I've got a question on that $25,000. I mean, now you're saying they have to show a special cost for that? I mean, if they, if I came to you and I said, "Look, I'm going to redo this building and it's going to cost me $300,000." Okay? Are we going to go over and okay $150,000 of it? Or are we going to okay $25,000?
I think the, it would be up to the applicant if they wanted to apply for a higher percentage or a greater amount than $25,000. That's entirely up to them. What we would do is we could look at a different set of, of criteria such as, you know, calculating a return on investment, so to speak. So what is the employment they're bringing in? What is the sales tax and increase, proposed increase in property tax that would be associated with that project? With amounts that would, where their request would be $25,000 or less, we don't look at projects with that kind of criteria. We would just say, "Does it meet the spirit of the program? Are they going to be doing projects that increase the longevity and value of the property?" And it's an easier application process, or it's not as stringent in terms of the criteria they would have to meet. And if they want to go above and beyond that, they can, they can make that request, but we'd be looking at tax generation and employment generation, things like that.
Good, thank you.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, the reality is if we have a project that wanted to do it at 200 or 300,000, they're going to come with a regular TIF ask at this point. It wouldn't necessarily fall into AIP. We have a separate set of criteria for those larger projects that would be, that would still be able to take use of TIF. They wouldn't come through AIP. They'd come through the typical TIF channel of return on investment. The full numbers game of the TIF ask. Again, my concern is more, the, the way I understand it, and I may be incorrect, that's, that's why I'm asking at this point. If I'm an owner that wants to do multiple projects, I want to do my front facade, I want to do my roof, I want to do new windows and doors, I want to really class up the property, and I, I can afford to do it for the 100 or 150,000 it's going to cost, am I only able to incentivize one of those projects or am I able to ask up to the $25,000?
The idea is that you'd ask up to the $25,000, but just how we calculate and get to the $25,000.
The project would eat all of the projects in one go.
Correct.
Is how we'd interpret that.
Yeah, and just how they, how we classify the percentage would be based on the projects that they're doing. So as you mentioned, so they would get 50% for the facade replacement, but only 10% for a roof replacement. And then the cost of that would be up to $25,000.
They could do multiple projects in one hit.
Does that, does that, does that satisfy your contention then, David, that this might be a little bit more improved than the old way of doing this?
I mean, that's certainly a bonus. My, my issue still lies with the inspection, some of the inspections. If I'm doing exterior maintenance, again, we have inspectors doing the commercial part, but they're not up necessarily in the apartments because we don't have a residential inspection program. And again, if I'm an owner and I have the city come in and they find something I don't know about, they find some major issue, it could be $100,000 issue, that's a gamble I'm taking. And I don't know if I'd take that gamble. That wouldn't be something that would preclude the use of the building as it sits now.
Alderman Verbic?
Alderman Jacobson, would you prefer then that they be forthcoming with building issues that they are aware of? And then I think that's what I would prefer and that we could work something out. Let's, let's have a plan to remedy these issues. And then with that type of plan in place, perhaps, would you consider them then for some type of incentive if they were agreeing to a plan and agreeing to make these improvements?
I worry we open up a can of worms. Once you go in and we're aware of a condition, how can you not say, "Hey, you need to start fixing this?" And what, what amnesty do we give at that point? I just think it opens up a somewhat slippery slope in terms of some of those major issues. If it's a cursory inspection, if it's a fire life safety inspection, if it's something, checking all the exterior, making sure we're not putting facade into a building that doesn't have a roof, those things I understand. But once you start walking into some of these 100-year-old buildings, again, imagine the situation was a year ago and we sent the inspectors in for a facade project for the annex building, and they found a 100 or $150,000 structural problem with the building that, again, wasn't precluding its use, it was being used every day. Again, where does that leave us? Where does that leave the owner in saying, "Well, I came for a $10,000 ask to put some new windows and make my building look nice, and now my building is condemned and I can't do anything about that."
But it's the owner's responsibility to maintain their building. If they're in over their head, they need to get out of it. If they don't have the capital to get, to be a building owner, don't get into it. The, the public cannot continue to support those entities that buy these properties and can't afford to maintain them.
Alderman Norrico?
That perspective as well. I fought that perspective for a long time.
Yeah. My concern is that if we go ahead and improve a facade improvement, and in fact, there are issues such as the city has faced with recently in a building, what are we saying about how we view, you know, the safety of our residents? And I think a process can be set up so that if issues are found, as I'm fairly certain there will be, in these inspections, that, you know, they're prioritized, they're looked at, and, you know, it's clear that the city isn't going in, you know, with the white glove or something, but it's trying to ensure that they are, that we are making a reasonable investment. I don't want to invest in something that, you know, six months a year after we do it, you know, we're facing condemnation or somebody has been hurt in a building.
You know, I think a lot of this is, is spelled out in that one portion of the, of the plan, 2A. You know, it says applicants do not have to be in complete code, code compliance. Immediate action will not be taken unless the property owner is in direct violation of the municipal building code, which talks about immediate public danger. In the event that code violations are found during the inspection but do not warrant immediate citation, the city will work with the property owner to develop an action plan and agreeable timeline for correcting identified violations. You know, I think this hopefully addresses both Alderman Fagan, your point about you don't want to put the lipstick on the pig. If we use that expression once more time.
One more time, I know. I know.
You just stopped it.
Sure did.
And it also, I think, hopefully addresses what Alderman Jacobson was talking about, that if somebody has not maintained that building, as you say, Alderman Verbic, they're not going to ask for this in the first place, are they? They're not going to ask for any assistance from us in the first place. I, 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 that's the way I would see it. So, you know, is this a first step that may bear some fruit in terms of improving certain areas that are perhaps, you know, they aren't going to go into the TIF scenario? It would, it would, to me, seem to make sense that we'd want to consider, consider this resolution positively. Any further discussion? Alderman Markort?
So can I make a motion that we delete the first sentence of the second paragraph six?
Where is that now?
It's second.
Page four.
Page four, number six, the second one. And then we'll delete the first sentence.
The second's your motion.
I think it's that entire number six. I think they're the same thing. I think they were written that, that's why they both share six. I think it's two iterations of the same thing.
Right, and they're recognized by city staff.
Oh, I see. Okay, we're back to that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the motion is.
I mean, the top number six addresses all of those things in a much more condensed fashion.
What about the final sentence out of that, where it says, "The city council will make the final determination of the eligibility for..."
That's in both number sixes, too.
It's in both number sixes.
Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
Jason?
Well, yeah.
So you go ahead, Mike.
Do you want to take out the whole second six paragraph?
Yeah, because otherwise it says the same as the first six.
Although the first six doesn't say first come, first served. So it would have to be a amalgamation of the two, and they effectively address the same thing. And that's why I think, again, they were both listed as six. I think one of them, they were in process of being amalgamated, I think. So it would be, I mean, I'd like to see that first come, first served. Six fixed up, however, however we need to see it without that first line, so yes.
So actually, you could say that the second sentence and the third sentence, because this is final decisions on funding, but are made by the city council. I'm being, no, that's, we already said that's the sixth. The ability is dependent on the amount authorized for the program in any given fiscal year. Should that be left in, too?
I think it's the entire first six and the first sentence of the second six that have to go. I think we address everything we need after that first sentence of the second six.
Do we want to leave the first come, first served basis in? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do you see, have you gleaned enough out of this conversation, Jason, that you think you can wordsmith that to where you can capture the spirit of what we have tossed around up here?
Absolutely.
Okay. So.
So what we're doing is, is basically the language is saying that because of the limited funds in this program, projects are, are considered on a first come, first served basis, on a case-by-case basis, with, with final decisions made by the city council. It does, it doesn't make any, I mean, we're going to assume, are we not, that staff are going to be out there, out and about. It's not city council going into the building and doing some of this work. But what it does is remove the language that anyone would think that, that the staff is making the final decision. Do you see what I mean?
Okay. So that would be my revised amendment. This is that conglomeration together.
Okay.
Because I don't want to, this is not up for a second reason. This is a resolution. So what we pass tonight is what's passed. So we sort of want to make the amendment and the revisions correct, or we have to table it and have you come back again with our revisions. Do you understand?
Or we could, we could simply pass a resolution with the understanding that the community development staff, under the direction of, in this case, of Jason Mitchnick, will make the changes that we have agreed to. It's going to be in the minutes. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we'd have to amend this necessarily, but would you be comfortable with that, Mike, that we approve the wordsmithing of our, of our community development staff?
Well, I think that's what his motion, that's the intent of his motion.
Oh, okay.
It's to get the wordsmithing done.
Mayor, there's been a fair amount of discussion. If it meets with the council's approval, while there would be a slight delay in bringing this back to the next council meeting, we can make the changes that we believe the council is suggesting and return it on consent agenda at the next meeting. And if there are any further changes, you could pull it off and direct those. But I think there's been some different direction given, and we're hearing what sounds like a consensus on many of the major issues, but it might be sensible to bring this back and make sure we're meeting your exact direction.
That sound like a bullshit, Alderman Markort?
I'd like to get it done tonight, tell you the truth. Again, we're in... Again, we're in, we're in the construction season. If people are going to go get bids to push it back.
That was my next question of Jason. You know, how, what's, what is this, what's this going to do to your timetable?
I think we could certainly make the changes. I know there's, there are some people waiting for the application to be approved so that they can complete it and turn it around. We could tentatively distribute that once it's been corrected and have them start heading down that process, that path in parallel while we bring back the changes so at the next council meeting you can approve them. But I fully understand what you're asking for in terms of rewriting section six here and feel confident that I can make those changes.
Okay. Alderman Jacobson.
I would make a motion to pass this conditionally on those changes suggested tonight to get the ball rolling with final review at the next, at the next meeting. I mean, I'd like to see the applications start coming in now effectively. We have the framework together. We have, we have the basics and bones in place. Let's get the applications start rolling. And if we have to make a minor change to some wording next time, let's not prevent those applications from start coming in.
Who made the original motion on this, Ruth?
The original motion was made by Alderman Norrico.
Alderman who?
Norrico.
Alderman Norrico made the original. Would you, would you agree to that change, that it'd be a conditional approval based on a little changes as, as discussed in our meeting tonight?
It looks like Alderman.
I just, a procedural question. We now have three motions on the floor, with the most recent being Alderman Jacobson's.
Because his not been seconded.
I'll second it then.
Thank you.
I'll withdraw my second on Alderman Markwart's amendment. So, but procedurally, how do we need to go here, Dean?
I would respectfully suggest the clearest way to approach it might be to take all the pending motions off the table and start with one motion that encapsulates the council's direction. If that's not preferable, then we would vote on Alderman Jacobson's motion and, and then the underlying motion.
If Alderman Norrico withdrew her motion, mine would be the only one on the floor. But hers.
Would you withdraw your original motion, Alderman Norrico?
Sure, it's gotten so muddied at this point.
So, at this point in time.
There's no motion on the floor.
No. My understanding is that Alderman Verbic withdrew his second to Alderman Markwart's motion.
Yes.
Alderman Norrico has withdrawn her motion. Alderman Jacobson made a motion that had a belated second from Alderman Fanukin, so that would appear to be the only motion on the floor at the moment.
Is there a second to Alderman Jacobson's motion?
Yes, I already did that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion?
What is Alderman Jacobson's motion? I'm sorry.
That we approve, the resolution is drafted conditionally.
Okay.
To allow applications to start coming in as of passage, and we can make a final review under our consent agenda at the next meeting.
Now, does that include our discussion on the deletion of the second number six with the one change?
Yes, with those changes that were consensus tonight, obviously.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that discussion on that resolution. Item number six, omnibus, omnibus approval of resolution 2018-065 authorizing a land lease agreement with Hillside Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Hillside Restaurant, for a portion of the property located on the west side of North Second Street. And resolution 2018-066 authorizing a land lease agreement with Universal Restaurant Group, doing business as O'Leary's Irish Pub and Grill, for a portion of property located on the west side of South Third Street. I entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. With further information on this request, our community development director, Joelle L. Charlton.
Hi, thanks again. This item tonight looks at two of three existing sidewalk leases that have been in the downtown for quite some time. So, back in the late 2000s, there had been some analysis and acknowledgement of the fact that outdoor patio seating is beneficial to the health and vibrance of a downtown area. So, at that time, and again later in 2009, or in 2014, three businesses, three restaurants in the downtown were granted the authority to use the public sidewalk in front of their businesses to provide outdoor dining opportunities for their patrons. This is an omnibus vote on two separate resolutions that would authorize these leases again in the very same format as before, so the same rental for the same property for both Hillside and O'Leary's. Eduardo's is the third one. We're not quite prepared to present that. We'll bring that to you at the next council meeting for consideration at that time. One of the things that we did, and that was, that is required by TIF laws, we're required to provide notice or an opportunity for people to provide an alternate bid for the same type of thing, which is kind of difficult because nobody's really going to provide or request permission to use outdoor space. So, we did provide that notice and did not receive any interest from other parties to bid or provide leases on that space. Again, the terms are the same for both of these, at ninety cents per square foot being offered. So, the overall impact on these two leases is eighteen hundred and forty-five dollars per year. So, this isn't a money generator. It's just to cover our cost of doing the billing, the annual billing, collecting and monitoring and making sure that they're in compliance with the code and going out and doing various inspections. So, the two, or the two resolutions are there for your consideration, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Are there any questions on this? Alderman Fanukin.
How was the ninety cents negotiated, or how was that arrived at?
Actually, it was, and I'm not sure if it was the first or second time, but they had an appraisal done on the, on the cost per square foot for commercial properties. I don't know if that was commercial or, you know, vacant sidewalk space. I don't know that that's something they did, but we have an appraisal, and this number was less than the appraisal that was given. That's, that was the action they took.
Any, any other thoughts on this? Joelle, and there has been some contention that the O'Leary's area has a problem with handicap access or handicap access around, I know Bill Feldman, who has been a, a champion with handicap parking, handicap issues, and has raised some questions. Are you fairly satisfied, I know Tim, you've, you've dealt with Mr. Feldman on this, are you satisfied that, that by moving forward with this, we can still address his questions if, in fact, they are valid concerns as it relates to handicap accessibility in those areas?
So, my understanding of his two questions, I will outline for you, and then I'm going to ask Public Works Director Tim to, to talk about what he actually did go out and do to confirm this information. My understanding of Mr. Feldman's concerns were whether or not there was adequate or code compliant access around the fenced-in area to make sure that there's the required thirty-six inches. And I know Mr. Holloman and his staff did take some measurements, and so he'll give you the results of that. I think he was also had some concerns and discussed another concern he had with Mr. Holloman about the use of pavers as the, as an accessible means to, to get over the pavement. So, we did ask our chief building official to review the code and make sure that pavers are an acceptable surface upon which to provide an accessible route. And obviously, they can't be, you know, you can't have changes in grade and other things, but pavers are an acceptable means to provide that service. So, Tim, if you could comment on the measurements that were taken?
Yeah, I think Joelle summarized it well. The minimum accessibility is four feet, so it's well within the thirty-six inches. I think the question is the surface of the sidewalk or of the area that is used as a sidewalk. And it is not necessarily, well, it is, as Joelle mentioned, there are pavers that are used as sidewalk in our downtown area. And so, this is something that's not just at this location. Pavers serve the purpose of the public sidewalk in several areas of our downtown. And as Joelle mentioned, as long as the relief of those pavers is not more than a quarter inch, it does meet ADA requirements. And so, you know, whenever we see a paver that's more than a quarter inch, we're always trying to repair that. And we're downtown on a regular basis identifying those areas and then repairing them.
I, I know that at least two of members that are sitting up here tonight have spent considerable time with Mr. Feldman on our right around Mike Verbic being, are you his Alderman? Is that, no, no, okay. You are, Kate, okay. And I just want to do the right thing. This, to me, approving a resolution like this is, is business friendly. I mean, it is allowing us to continue alfresco dining areas, et cetera, and I like it. On the other hand, I do want to respond, as we should, as a city council and as a staff, to concerns, especially as they relate to some of those that impact and are relevant to our, our disabled community or our community with disabilities. So, having said that, we, we have a motion to approve this. No further discussion, roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Joelle, appreciate it. Item number seven, resolution 2018-067 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority for shared improvements to the intersection of Annie Glidden Road at Fairview Drive. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Management Analyst Pat DiDiana will speak to this item. Patrick?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, staff requests council authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Toll Highway Authority to coordinate a payment of twenty thousand, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, fifty-one cents for the city's share of engineering and improvements for the intersection of Annie Glidden Road and Fairview Drive. And the second part is to define the maintenance and the responsible party for that future maintenance. This IGA is another critical step in our efforts to coordinate the city's improvements with the tollway's improvements to the, to the, to the Annie Glidden Road interchange. Our coordinated efforts will minimize disruptions to the motoring public and, and ensure the city receives its federal earmark for our planned improvements to the intersection. With that being said, I'll take any questions you guys may have.
And this is totally under our budget?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good. Dado. Any further questions or comments? Patrick? If not, roll call, please.
Fagan? Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Can we ask Alderman Fagan to vote now, since he was gone, just for that momentary period? Would you favor this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, Patrick. New or, excuse me, number eight, resolution 2018-068 authorizing the negotiation and execution of two electrical aggregation contracts with Dynegy for electricity at DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport and city-owned streetlights and traffic controls for a period not to exceed twelve months. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and once again, Pat DiDiana is here to explain this. Pat?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, staff requests council authorize the negotiation and execution of two electrical aggregation agreements with Dynegy for electricity at our airport and our city-owned streetlights and traffic controls. The city's two agreements for those expire this summer. Working with Rock River Energy Services, we obtained favorable bids with estimated savings of eleven thousand dollars for streetlights and traffic controls and nearly eight thousand five hundred dollars for the airport. Both contracts are one-year agreements because the savings for two and three-year contracts did not justify the terms. With that being said, I'll answer any other, any questions you may have.
Okay. Any further questions of this? Roll call.
Norrico?
Yes.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's any, thank you, Pat, any new or unfinished business or is there? I don't see any hands raised. Let's move along to reports, communications. This allows your Alderman to make any comments that they'd like to report on, and I'll ask our first ward, Alderman Dave Jacobson, if he has anything.
Nothing today.
Alderman Fanukin.
Just a couple of quick things with the heat wave seen to be continuing and in and out that just remind people to hightrate. And I also would like to thank Molly for stepping up to be our next interim city manager as we move along in search of our next permanent one.
Alderman Markwart?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Alderman Norrico?
I want to echo Alderman Fanukin's comments regarding Molly assuming the interim role. She's ably performed as finance director, making complex issues, you know, reasonable for council members, and I know that the city will be in good hands with her.
Alderman Verbic?
Congratulations to the DeKalb Barb's graduating on Saturday.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
Very quickly, I'd like to report that this city council approved a, a request for proposal that we, that they go out, and according to Chris Randall in our HR department, we received six. A steering committee comprised of HR staff person, Michelle Brennich, who is our chief recruiter, along with Alderman Fagan and myself, looked at the six requests or the six proposals and have determined that two of those seem to make sense, one to the tune of about nineteen thousand dollars, the other about twenty-three-five.
Something like that.
Or something like that. But we also felt, and I know there was some question over the weekend from, from Alderman Norrico, and that we dismissed the idea perhaps, or did not talk about the idea of also considering an in-house search. The steering committee felt that that would be something that we would want council to consider. So, those are the three options, if you will, that we have going forward now as we continue the, the search for a new city manager. So, we will take a look at those two proposals. We will continue to solicit ideas from the public regarding our city manager search, and we may very well. and we may very well decide that the third option, which is the in-house search utilizing our HR staff and other contacts throughout the region, we may choose to go in that direction. Pat, does that pretty much say what it was that we had been talking about?
I think that, you know, when we talked about in-house, it was almost a hybrid-type situation where we could use some of the services of the two companies that we, that came in where we can, like I said, use some of their service, but actually us doing the legwork, which would entail us saving money.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just something other than just hiring somebody. We have to look at all our options, and I think it was an excellent idea that...
And we had decided, too, that we would move this forward to have further discussion and some final decisions made at our next city council meeting, which is our June 11th.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's my only report. Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, do you have anything to report?
No report.
Okay. Attorney Frieders?
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, the city currently prosecutes different types of violations in a number of forums. We hear administrative vehicle towless parking citations and claims relating to city-issued licenses through administrative hearings conducted here at City Hall. For moving violations and vehicle-related violations, we use both a circuit court ordinance violation process that are prosecuted by the city and a similar process for cases that are prosecuted through the state's attorney's office, depending on the severity of offense. For lower-level non-vehicle violations, such as minor retail theft or minor fights disorderly house similar charges, we currently use the circuit court ordinance violation process. For higher severity offenses, we use criminal charges administered through the state's attorney's office as misdemeanors or felonies. We've been in discussion with the circuit court judiciary for the past several months regarding the city's ordinance violation call, which is presently conducted here at City Hall on Monday mornings. There's significant benefit to residents in having that call be conducted here, both in terms of walkability and access and public transit. Both are significantly approved, having that call here as compared to having it be conducted at the DeKalb County Courthouse in Sycamore. But the judiciary is currently evaluating some staffing and scheduling challenges that they've been undergoing, and they're also evaluating the role of ordinance violation prosecution in the list of different types of due process that may be available to address lesser severity legal offenses. The courts have discussed reducing the use of warrants or other related processes that can be viewed as more coercive in nature, and has discussed making the ordinance violation process more civil in nature. Those discussions initially started with the city of Sandwich, which used to maintain an ordinance violation process. Sandwich has now abandoned that process and gone to administrative hearings for local ordinance violations. As we've evaluated changes in the legal system, both around the state and the circuit here and also across the country, and as we've considered the needs and direction of the judiciary and the residents of the city, we are going to be recommending to council to follow the model that Sandwich has undertaken and discontinue the process of prosecuting ordinance violations in the circuit court. What that would mean essentially, moving violations, speeding tickets, anything of that nature would all be prosecuted through the state's attorney's office. You'd get a ticket in the same fashion you do now, simply go to the courthouse in Sycamore instead of going to DeKalb. Less serious vehicle-related violations, seat belts, things of that nature, could be prosecuted as administrative hearings here at City Hall before an administrative hearing officer. From a residence perspective, one of the benefits of that is the court costs or the hearing costs associated with that would be greatly reduced compared to what they are in the circuit court. Lower intensity ordinance violations, the same kind of things that I talked about being prosecuted right now as ordinance violations in the circuit court, could also be prosecuted as administrative hearing calls. The circuit court and the circuit clerk's office would both have significant savings in that they wouldn't have to send staff to City Hall here once a week. We would look to transition this to essentially end the circuit court call on one Monday and pick up administrative hearings on the following Monday. We would have a significant increase at the staff level in workload doing the administrative work associated with operating the court call, as much of that is currently being done through the circuit clerk's office. But we're currently investigating software available to support that demand. There are a number of other communities in northern Illinois that have gone through similar processes in the past couple of months because of changes in their court systems, such as Joliet, which is currently undergoing a request for proposals process to evaluate administrative hearing software based on their transition in this very same fashion. We've discussed this internally. We consulted with the mayor regarding the topic. We've also discussed with the state's attorney, who's very supportive of this transition and accepting of the changes in workload for their office, but also supportive of the change in the nature of the city's prosecutions. We've discussed with the judiciary, and I was contacted by Chief Judge Tucker just this morning, who said that they will support in any way that they can and ensure that it's a smooth transition if the city does go in this fashion. From a staff perspective, the recommendation to transition from ordinance violation prosecution in the circuit court to handling it through administrative hearings is unanimous from all affected departments. Now, under ideal conditions, we would have a significant amount of time to work through this, but we were advised by the judiciary late last week that they're making a change as of mid-July. They will either be discontinuing certain aspects of the court process or changing the date of the court process, which would have significant impact on our overtime scheduling for officers, which is currently all circling around a Monday morning schedule. If the council is supportive, we would work to try and implement this change in process, essentially within that 45-day window. We are currently reviewing the RFPs that other communities have done and the responses that they've received, and we anticipate bringing forward some thoughts and recommendations with regard to that process to the council very expeditiously. We anticipate recommending, we have an administrative hearing process right now that works effectively for the cases that we're taking to it. We would anticipate recommending some minor changes in that process that would include changes to the city code administrative hearing ordinance. That could mean bringing potential items for the council to consider as soon as your first meeting in June. We're working very diligently to be agile and avoid a circumstance where we create significant disruption for the community, which is accustomed to our Monday morning court call, or significant confusion with the public, or significant staff overtime and trying to transition to a different day or a different process and then transition again a very short time thereafter. So, if possible, we'd like to have a clean transition for the public and for staff that maintains a seamless operation. We have had a significant amount of internal discussion in a very short timeframe, and we're working across every affected department to gather information and continue, we'll continue presenting that to council. But the notification we got regarding the change in schedule came at the very end of last week, and we wanted to share this with you at the first possible opportunity. We'll continue providing information as soon as it becomes available, and this is our recommendation, but it will, of course, be subject to the direction and any future action of council, whether you choose to effectuate that or not.
And you would expect that action maybe, or the ask for the action would be available at our June 11th meeting?
The primary two things that we, if this is to happen, that we would need to do to effectuate it would be a change in our city code and ordinance, and also potentially looking at software. And we are looking at and specifically trying to identify software that does not have upfront cost, software that is funded through the operation of the process. And that our goal would be to give the council as much time as possible, so we would certainly try to work towards the June 11th meeting, but if not, we'd be looking at the second meeting in June, but we'll move it along as quickly as we can.
It would still align itself with that July deadline or that July start from the judiciary's point of view, right?
Yes, if that's the council's direction.
Question, if I may. So, Dean, apparent to me that the county's trying to offload some of this cost. What's the budgetary impact then on the city?
That is something that we're currently analyzing, and I don't want to be unfair to the county in terms of, I think there are a lot of factors that are influencing their decision. They are short-staffed in judges. They do have costs in operating this process. They've operated it for many decades, but it is an ongoing cost for them. I think there's a fair likelihood that the outcome of this will be revenue positive to the city, because currently, a significant portion of the fine, on a basic moving violation, a city resident, if they receive a speeding ticket, they may end up paying $250 and getting court supervision, and only a few dollars of that returns back to the city. Through an administrative hearing process, the fine recovery to the city for fines that are paid would be essentially 100%. The costs, as I mentioned, are significantly lower because we can operate the system more efficiently. There are software programs that, I don't want to promise too much, but there are software programs out there that on a per-case basis, you're looking at a few dollars of cost. Instead of what we look at right now, if someone pays a $300 court fine, they're paying $247 in court costs and filing fees on top of their fine. That could be reduced significantly. So, we think there are ways to structure this that doesn't have an adverse impact on the city, that equally importantly has a financial benefit to, that sounds awkward, but a financial benefit to a resident that is convicted of committing an offense. The fines and costs that they pay would be lesser, a greater portion of that would be returned to the city.
All right, thanks, Dean.
Any other questions? Dean, anything else?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Our interim city manager, Patty Hoppenstett?
No report, thank you.
Police Chief Gene Lawrie?
Briefly, reporting today, we had a child safety seat event at Target. We helped facilitate the installation of over 30 car seats, which is really a positive in reducing injuries to children that occur in our area and not only in the city, but throughout the county. Two things from over the weekend that I think are very notable for us. First, Memorial Day overall was an excellent, peaceful, uneventful, except for the events of honoring our soldiers who've served. So, it was the, what I would consider the best Memorial Day that we've seen in this city, at least since I've been here. So, kudos to the men and women who've served on the streets and all the hard work they've been putting through to make that happen. Also, command staff over the weekend just finished and submitted a $750,000 grant application for the mental health grant. As you know, we've received a $75,000 initial grant from the Department of Justice. This is a follow-up grant, which we had discussed, and the council had approved us going after. If this grant comes to be, it could be a multi-year grant. It would fund all of the crisis intervention training over the next three years, so every police officer in the city would be trained in crisis intervention. It would also lay the groundwork for us to have a triage center, a study and assess the probability or the effectiveness of having a triage or drop-off center for people who are encountered through police duties that need some immediate behavioral health attention. And with the limited resources that we have locally, this would be a big game changer for us, and a variety of other things. So, this would be a very positive event for the city overall, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Gene. Finance Director Molly Talkington?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity and having the confidence in me to take on this challenge as we continue the search for a permanent city manager. I look forward to your continued support and, of course, the support of the community that I live and work in, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Molly. Fire Chief Eric Hicks?
With the heat upon us, it's time to keep an eye out for your neighbors and those that are susceptible to heat-related illnesses. I do want to mention the current cooling shelters that we have in town, and that would be the library, the senior center, DeKalb Park District, and those are open during normal business hours. And then, the Hope Haven Shelter is open for 24 hours. So, if anybody needs one of those, they can give us a call with an emergency number, and we can assist them in getting to one of those facilities.
Thank you, Eric. Joel Charlton, our community development director.
Just one item, Mayor and Council. In the course of performing his duties as code compliance coordinator, Carl Leoni oftentimes puts on crime-free housing landlord training courses. He had such a course last week that was attended by, I believe, about 10 landlords, and as part of the process, he does submit, asks them to complete a form talking about their experience, asked what they liked, what they didn't like, some things that they'd like to see in the future, and then an opportunity to provide other comments. We got very good comments. Carl got very good comments. I thought I'd share a couple with you. The most valuable part of the class from one individual was learning about the eviction process, fire safety methods, and learning about how to better protect himself as a landlord. They also made comments about Carl's speaking ability and the guest speakers that were available, saying that they were very interesting. One respondent said that the applicant screening techniques, eviction process, making his leases stronger, and that the city of DeKalb is interested in reducing crime by engaging the landlord community was something very positive. Also, one of the things that I thought was kind of interesting on another comment that was provided, it says, "Thank you for offering this program. Although I was less enthusiastic about attending, I feel I learned a lot about things I probably should have known anyway." So, I just wanted to share some of those comments with you.
Yeah, Carl Leoni shared those with me today, and I, and there was one that was akin to that last one, and whoever wrote it said, "I thought this was going to be one of those worthless sessions from the city, and I really learned a lot." So, it was good, yeah, thank you. Our Public Works Director, Tim Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to report that we did have a briefing today with Veeride, the bike-share company. They had a very successful first 30 days, limited to the NIU campus. Got about 7, 7,500 riders over that 30 days, 95% use of the bikes. After that 30 days, which was free, that they started charging. That's been going for about five days. They've had 400 riders, so they're very enthusiastic about the program. Staff is going to be looking for opportunities to expand beyond the NIU campus into downtown and other areas that we might be able to benefit from that service.
Would that happen sometime yet this summer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Also, I wanted to let council know that we did open our proposals for refuse on May 17th. We had a public opening. We will be doing interviews tomorrow, and we will be bringing the proposals forward on June 11th for a discussion, and then give you two weeks to really consider all of the information and then ask for your preferences to be given on the June 25th meeting. So, that's what our schedule looks like for the refuse contract.
Thank you, Tim. Our HR Director, Chris Randle?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to provide an update to your update for the city manager search. As the main point of contact in HR for this process, I started doing the background reference checks for the two identified search companies, and as soon as I received the information from my contacts, I will provide that information to council. So, prior to the meeting on June 11th, you will have all of the information available to you to better make a decision. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me directly.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Any other comments from anybody here on the council? Thank you, staff, for all your hard work and your reports tonight. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We are adjourned.[1793.88]